To order the March 24th, 2025, meeting of the Laramie Planning Commission, roll call please.
Pacino is absent. Evans?
Here.
Mattamore?
Here.
Isla White?
Here.
O'Toole?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
And Moody?
Here.
That's six present, one absent.
Okay, first order of business is the approval of the agenda and we need to make a amendment to the agenda to add on a discussion for, or to just to figure out who, who new chair would be and it would be put in the, in the new business portion of the, of the agenda. So Donald, you have a
So, okay.
Just to save you all some time, I'd also like to add a new, a resolution as well. So it'd be resolution, planning commission resolution 25-02, just regarding your funding that you can use and a request that was made for attendance to a conference. So, so just add both of those if we could under the, under new, new business.
You got that, Donald?
So
2502, 25-02.
So I move that as new items on the agenda, we consider 2502 and to have a discussion on the new chair for the planning commission.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of the amended agenda as presented and as amended, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, nay? Okay, agenda, amended agenda approved. Next item is the approval of, of minutes from the
Chair.
March 10th, 2020, yeah.
Can we do a approval of the agenda as amended?
Oh, we didn't.
No, you just changed, added the two items. Now we need it approved as amended.
Oh, that, that, that just got the, the motion established. Okay.
All right, move the agenda be approved as amended.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Donald. All those in favor of approval of the amended agenda, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, say nay? Okay. Next is approval of the, the March 10th minutes.
So moved.
There is a
A motion.
Motion to approve them as presented.
Don't get seasick.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Jake. All those in favor of approving the, the minutes, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, nay? Okay, minutes of the March 10th meeting approved. So next is citizen comments on non-agenda related items and topics. No action can be taken. Is there anyone in the audience? And on the, on the board that wants to say something? Seeing no one, we will move on to the next item, which is planning commission and staff reports and comments. Derek, Philip, Emma?
Yes, Honorable Chair, one, one announcement. You should have received an email from me about the work session that was asked for by city council at their meeting last week regarding the billboard text amendment that this body recommended denial of. They want to have a joint work session to discuss the denial, the reasons for that, get the applicant back in the room and iron things out, or to just figure out better where the denial came from. That date set for Mar- or April 22nd. So if you haven't responded yet with your availability, we, we would appreciate knowing that. So if we need to reschedule, we'd like to have the, a quorum at least of you all there. Although no action will be taken, of course, it's just to, for city council to understand better where you guys are coming from, where the board's coming from. So April 22nd at 6:00 PM.
You said that you would, that they were going to invite the applicant. What is the purpose of that and what role do they play in that?
Yeah, so during the work session, no app, no, no actions taken, but it still gives the applicant a chance to get in front of both, both bodies to answer any questions, right, about the text amendment? And, you know, give them kind of equal time to, to basically answer questions about their own application. So.
Will they be first providing a presentation or will they just be there to answer questions?
It's my understanding that it's, it's going to be more driven by city council as far as what they want, what information that they want. I don't think a formal presentation is warranted, but we are meeting with the city manager actually this Friday to kind of discuss the, the format a little bit more. We may know more at the next meeting. I know we have one before that work session that we can update you on, but right now it's just really that date is what we would need confirmation of as working. And as we get closer, we can inform you more of the format of the work session.
Um, so is, is city council, do they have the authority to overturn our, our decision? What's the sort of the, the outcome of the, the whole process?
Yeah, Chair, there's, there's several ways it could go. One of them is, I mean, the, the recommendation from this body is that, right, it's a recommendation. So
I thought it was a decision.
No, it's a recommendation for, for approval or, or denial. So this board recommended that the city council
Oh, okay. I got confused. I thought it was a, like one of those final decisions. I, yeah.
Chair, really quick, you've got, remember you had two items you considered. You had the variance, which you denied, which you are a decision-making body. Okay. And I was like, I think you're confused, but then, but then you had the text amendment that Philip is
Oh, okay, okay. So it's just having to do with, with the text amendment. Okay, is that
Right, they could
Maybe I clarified for people here.
So they can make a decision as they see fit, you know, for approve or deny, but they could also send it back to this body to be considered again with, you know, kind of a different approach perhaps by the applicant, by us as staff, right? So, so those are the options.
Does the applicant filed suit?
Chair, through you, no, they haven't filed suit for the text amendment. They did for this, for the variance that you all did, that the board of adjustment did recommend denial of. So there, there was a suit filed for that, which we'll know more about. I mean, there's, we're in the findings process and stuff like that. So.
From the chair? Yeah. And remind me, I thought I saw the digital billboard outside the courthouse and then I didn't see it. So where are we with the digital billboard at the courthouse? It's, it's not there, right?
Correct.
It was there for a while and then there will be one and it will be the same or larger dimensions?
Chair, through you, no, there, there was, to my knowledge, unless it was on a weekend sometime, I don't think they put one up, to my knowledge. There's not been an EMC up there.
Yeah, I take a lot of math.
Sorry.
So maybe I was hallucinating, but I thought I saw
You said a temporary, temporary highway digital sign.
Oh, is that what I saw?
That's a reader, perhaps, but Y dot reader board, maybe.
Okay, okay. So
Yeah.
The sign is in progress and will be put in place.
So Chair, through you, so the, the variance was approved by the board of adjustment for the EMC outside the courthouse. That applic- that variance, which needed to be basically taken care of, I mean, the, the, the building permit needed to be filed six months after that decision, which it was not, so it expired. So it's my understanding that the county commissioners are now looking at another variance that will come before this board for a sign that is similar, but different in some ways from the original variance that you got, that this board approved.
Well, I'm, I'm willing to, yeah, go ahead, Chair.
So I looked at my calendar and so I, I have a particularly strong interest in this matter. And so I would, I'm not available that week and it's not going to be possible for me to, to zoom in. So I want to share that information. I also want to just put on the record now that I, I felt like we had a very thorough and thoughtful discussion when it came before us. We spent a lot of time with the applicant. And, and where I felt like we ended as a planning commission was that the text amendment was an approach to to legislate essentially, make policy changes to the code based on the interests of one particular party, which isn't particularly appropriate and arguably unlawful at times. It's vulnerable in terms of its lawfulness. And so, and we also felt like there, there wasn't a basis for, we had no alternative findings contrary to the recommendations and the findings of facts that had been presented to us by the staff. And, and if the work session is going to help communicate that more clearly to the council, then I think it's very important to, to have it. But I, but I wonder whether it's, it's also possible, maybe I'm happy to have a follow-up conversation with you as the staff or with the city attorney. But I, I do, I think you're probably hearing here that there's a frustration that, that we're, that the matter is, that there's additional time that the applicant then is taking up for, for a matter that we feel like, I feel like was very, was deliberated very fully and accurately and, and a record has been created for the basis of our recommendation to the council to, to deny the text amendment. We, we felt like the, the variance question was a closer call and we also took that very seriously and there's a record created and now I think that's what is subject to, there's been an appeal filed, right, with the district court, but that won't be addressed at the work session. That will be handled separately. So, I mean, if, if, if the council would like our participation in a work session, I'm, unfortunately I can't attend that at that time that it's been scheduled. And I realize there are a lot of other factors in scheduling something, but, but I did want to, to reiterate what, what I think we had worked through previously and, and put that on the record.
And I guess maybe to add to what Sharon said, you know, if they're going to be presenting additional information, then it almost seems inappropriate to me because we made a decision based on information presented in a session. And so if there is additional information presented that's different, then that seems inappropriate to me. It's not a work session any longer if it's a three-party situation like that. So it'd be helpful to get some more guidance from city council, exactly what their intent is, what the objective would be and what we can share that hasn't already been shared.
Chair.
Donald?
I guess it's within their legal rights to, for them to lean on us and lean on the city council because private property rights are at stake. But at the same time, I hear what Sharon is saying, since Sharon has a legal background, I would ask Sharon if you've time, and since you can't be present, write something for the city council to make explicit what your concerns are. Otherwise, I feel like this is a very big corporation and they really want this and they're going to spend a lot of money on it. And they're going to lean on us and lean on the city council and they're going to use as a wedge, public announcements outside the courthouse. And we could very easily be outgunned. And I think having given them a lot of time, a lot of time to make their case, I have a feeling we're about to, we may be going to hear their presentation for a third time. And we really have to be there to justify our decision because there are other communities that have done what Laramie has done, but we're smaller and more vulnerable and it's easy to push us.
Mr. Chair, through you. I said at the hearing, the last hearing we had with them, that I didn't think it was a good idea to change law or change code for one particular person. If, and that's basically for one company. If there were other billboard companies in town, I think my attitude might have been different. I don't know if I would have voted different or not, but you're basically doing it just for one company, for one billboard or one purpose. But if we change the code, we could have all five billboards become digital. And I'm not so opposed to a digital billboard. I think if the city council wants to change code, they're elected. And I think they are much more able to change law or code than we are. So I'm always hesitant to change code in this body because we're not elected, we're appointed. So I say, I think we, and I'm a small government guy from the, from the get-go, but I think we need to bear in mind what our limits as non-elected commissioners are. And I think the text amendment was beyond our purview, which is why I voted against it. And then once we got rid of the text amendment, there was no point in having a variance, I don't think. It just would have eroded the text, it would have eroded the current code for one company. So I think we gave them more than a fair hearing and we discussed the daylights out of it. So. But I'll go to the city council and if they want my opinion, I'll, I'll give it to them. And, you know, and I, I said then and I said now, you know, some of the arguments staff made, I thought were kind of weak, but valid, but weak. And I think some of the, a lot of the arguments that Lamar made were valid, but weak. You know, so I'll give them my opinion, but I'll stick by what we voted on.
And again, if, if ever and if folks aren't available, please let me know because it's, we could reschedule it, right? I mean, if Sharon's not
What's, what date is it again?
22nd, April 22nd.
It's not a week that we have a meeting normally. I don't think we have a meeting on the, on the Monday. I think it's the 20, I think it's the 14th and the 28th that we have a meeting. So that, yeah, yeah. But, but I, I appreciate the suggestion and I will follow it. If that is the time that there's a quorum and it makes sense to me, then I will write something up and, and share it around with the staff as well as my fellow commission members. So it's there because the point about, yes, they have, the council can change the policy, but the policy of not having billboards is already reflected in, in zoning and the comprehensive plan, as was spelled out in the staff report. And these billboards were grandfathered in and now they're asking to piggyback on that, that grandfather, that exception that was previously granted for them to do something different with them. And so it's, it, I, I think it's completely inappropriate through just a simple action at this time to change that policy choice that is embedded in many of the governing documents that we have to evaluate. And then I think it's appropriate for the, necessary for the city council to evaluate as well.
Okay, well, you heard it here.
Okay. No more announcements.
Good. Nice, nice discussion, everybody. Yeah.
So just another couple of quick announcements. I, excuse me. The, I did send out an email on Monday, March 31st. There's going to be a, some, the Wyoming Arts Alliance is going to be doing some Wyoming create, the Wyoming Creative Economy. It's a, it's, think of it as like a conference where they'll kind of go through what the creative economy is. So just, if you're interested in that, you can RSVP to that. It's in your emails. That's March 31st from 10 to 2. And then secondly, which we'll talk a little bit more about during the item about the resolution, but just as an announcement too, the Albany County Historic Preservation Board's doing their preservation commission, they call it camp. So you're going to camp a few tennis. And that is $35. There's a lunch and that's what the resolution's about, about paying for that if you're interested in attending. And that meeting is on May 9th from 9 to 4:45. So.
Is that the meeting where they present it to the state board?
Nope. This is a, this is just, this is, that, that meeting there is all about learning and understanding historic preservation. And you, I think you even get like a certificate when you get done. But it's basically learning about the broader process and how that might play a role. We think it's important maybe for planning commission, if you're interested in historic preservation type activities in the community and what that might look like for you, having that understanding, they provide that. So. Yeah.
Um, I, Derek, I had one question for you just on the, the email about the litigate, the appeal of the variance. There's a reference to that you shared some of the text of the, from the city attorney. If the P, and it says if the, an appeal is successful, the ruling of the administrative body is reversed. But I just, I think that what's, is being communicated there is that it would be invalidated. It would not, so we, so the variance we had denied, the, the court will evaluate whether the denial was justified. If it was not, that decision will be vacated, reversed, but it won't result in approval.
Correct.
Yeah. So I think that's
That is typically what happens is that the, the court is only looking at whether you followed potentially the right process or ruled properly under the bounds in which you were able to rule. And if they vacate that decision that you made as the board of adjustment, then they would have to go through some other process again to potentially have a variance approved or denied again.
So it would come back before, so it wouldn't automatically
It doesn't just automatically get approved.
Be approved as a result of
That's my understanding of it as well. Yep.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification. That's good. All right. Anything that commissioners want to say? Okay. On to the next disclosures, expertise, communications and potential conflicts of interest. Anybody out there? Seeing none. Current, current planning projects, there's no old business, new business consists of a resolution. 25-02, Derek, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, Chair, Commission, I don't know. I, I did send this to you by email, but if you want a quick copy, I can hand it out to you. I don't know if anybody needs a copy.
This is like grade school.
Uh, Chair and Commission, this would be the, the resolution before you. If, if you all remember, the city council approved that the planning commission had some discretionary funding and $3,000 to allow you to use it for disvarious things where, that the planning commission may need. One of those maybe being training. So the, the resolution before you is what's asked of the, the council and the city manager regarding if we want to spend those funds. I received an email from Jana regarding potentially attending the conference that I just mentioned to you on historic preservation. And so I got this put together. And really, if anyone else is available, you'd be more than willing to do that. The way I wrote, the way this was written is it's just noting that we would spend $35 per attendee. And so by approval of this resolution, you're acknowledging as the planning commission that you'll spend some of those funds to help send one, maybe other planning commissioners to the, to that conference. So that's really all this item is, just acknowledging that and formalizing this.
Okay. So is there a motion to, to approve?
I move we approve resolution, resolution 2025-02.
A second from John. All those in, in favor of approving the resolution, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay? Okay, resolution approved.
I will get you signed up. Okay. So you should get something. I'll send it to your city council or the city planning commission email. Okay. Right?
Okay, the next item is, I, I would like to step down as chair and provide the opportunity for somebody else here to, to take over as chair. So Derek, any details?
Sure, yes. The, the only, the only thing that I would say is that with this, we would just need to hear nominations for a new chair. Once we have the nominations, then you could vote on said chair, put a motion on the table for who you want to be chair and then go from there and see, see if somebody comes out on top.
Okay. Well, is there a nomination for, for new chair? And, and just, just make it, make it clear that in the, in the bylaws,
Yeah.
There is, the, the, the chair is like a, a two-year position theoretically, and then on the, on July is the official, a meeting in July is an official thing. And so what we're doing now is, is we'll have a new, a new chair, but then in July, there would be, we'd have to go through this routine again.
Correct. We would. So maybe it's a test run.
Yeah, yeah. See. All right. Okay. So are there any nominations for, for, tip for chair? Donald?
So Chris, before I make a nomination, I just want to thank you for serving as chair. I think you have been extremely fair and you brought a lot of expertise and thank you.
You're welcome.
Here, here.
All right. And, and I think the, the commission will be a stronger body with someone with, you know, Jake's got a lot of experiences as a, as chair, fill-in and vice-chair. And I think that everybody here is capable of, of doing a great, of doing a great job. And so spreading, spreading the experience, I think, is, is, is a really valuable thing. So anyways, is there a nomination for, for chair?
I nominate Tom.
Okay. Is there a second?
I don't think you have to second a nomination.
Okay. Any other nominations for, for chair? Okay. Well, any, so we'll vote for all those
No campaign speech?
So Ryan, do you do a roll call?
Yeah, I do a formal motion to elect him as chair then.
Okay.
Chris, could I explain why I'm nominating Tom?
Sure.
I think Tom in terms of concern for small businesses and fairness and expertise is a good choice. And I encourage people to vote for Tom.
And I absolutely agree with that. I think Tom has always been very courteous with staff and with the public and very thoughtful. And I, I know he knows Robert's rules of order and very, very dependable. He always shows up. And so I'm, I'm 100% behind, behind Tom.
Thank you.
Okay. So you need a, you need a motion?
Yep.
So Donald, you wanted to go?
So I move that we appoint Tom at, Tom Mattamore at a time uncertain to be chair of this commission.
Could you say what? Effective, what, April 14th, the next, the next meeting?
Effective April 14th, become chair of this commission for the next two years.
That's good, Chris. I don't want to change horses in the middle of this stream.
I, I second that, that, that motion. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Ryan?
Pacino?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Mattamore?
Aye.
Isla White?
Aye.
O'Toole?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
And Moody?
Aye.
Seven yeses and zero noes.
All right. Well, congratulations, Tom. And any, you know, I've got, I've got a little cheat sheet that, that, and Ryan, Ryan helps, helps quite, quite a bit. He can provide you with some information and, you know, any, any insights I can provide, more, more than happy to help.
Well, you're not going anywhere.
No, I'm, I'm not going anywhere. I'm just sitting in a different chair, bumbling along. All right. So I think that concludes our, our planning commission. Is there a motion to adjourn? I think that concludes, um, our, our planning commission. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And, and reconvene as, um, uh, as board of adjustment?
Board of appeals.
Appeal, board of appeals, sorry. See, good answer.
So moved.
Well, is there?
Second.
Second, Jake, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay? Okay, so we are now as board of appeals. And what's in front of us is A dash twenty-five dash oh-one, appeal of Laramie Municipal Code eight dot thirty-two dot two-three-zero related to the cost of abatement for seven fifty-five North Eleventh Street. And, um, should we do the swearing in of witnesses for board of appeals? Is that, is that correct? Yeah.
Correct.
So, um, if anybody?
The applicant's joining now.
Okay, so, uh, the applicant, um, is the only person out there that's going, going to talk. So, so Joan, do you, um, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, you're in. Um, so there's a, um, discussion, a, a presentation of, uh?
Yeah, Chair, just, uh, similar to like our board of adjustments. I know we don't do appeals too often. Uh, but we'll have, uh, Ray Sandoval present. He's with the city of Laramie. And, uh, he'll go through a typical staff report and then, uh, like always, you can provide then the applicant or the appellant to the opportunity to speak and present evidence. And then, uh, it's then on to you to make a determination of the appeal.
Okay, thank you, great.
How you guys doing tonight?
Pretty good.
Good. Hello, Board of Appeals. My name is Avon Sandoval. I'm the code enforcement inspector for the city of Laramie. Today, I'm here to present the staff's position on the abatement conducted on, at, uh, seven fifty-five North Eleventh Street on January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five. The property owner, Joan Burgert, is appealing the cost associated with this abatement. It is the staff's recommendation that you uphold the cost of the nuisance abatement, code enforcement, follow the requirements outlined in Laramie Municipal Code Section eight thirty-two, two-thirty, and charge the property owner the correct amount of four hundred and thirty-five dollars as required by Municipal Code Section twelve-eight zero-two-zero. We are here to determine whether the, uh, code enforcement correctly assessed the abatement cost in accordance with Municipal Code twelve-eight zero-two-zero. For your review, an invoice from Gardaia Services LLC showing a charge of two hundred and ninety dollars for the emergency snow and ice removal at seven fifty-five North Eleventh Street on January twenty-second, uh, twenty-twenty-five. That's in appeals packet number eight. In, uh, we also have included a letter to accounts receivable requesting the city to bill HMSC LLC attention to Joanne Gozar Burgert, two hundred and ninety dollars for the contractor's fee and an additional one hundred and forty-five dollars for the administrative fees, bringing the total to four hundred and thirty-five dollars. And that's in a packet, uh, attachment number six. It is a staff's position that the evidence provided in the staff report is accurate and that the correct amount of four hundred and thirty-five dollars was charged to Joan Burgert for the snow and ice removal on January twenty-second as per Laramie Municipal Code twelve zero eight zero-two-zero. Uh, I'll take you guys through the, uh, abatement process if you guys would like to hear the whole kind of the uh, quick rundown of the story, or we can go ahead and proceed down to the appellant's, uh, position.
Uh, is anyone interested in, in the abatement, uh, process?
Yeah, I am. I'd like to go through it, kind of cite code, um, sections of what, you know, what you do as you're looking through and, and
Absolutely.
Uh, kind of validate the citation.
Yes, yes, sir. Okay, following a complaint about snow and, uh, removal practices in, uh, North Tenth Street, extending down to, uh, North Twelfth Street from Bradley Street on over to Harney Street, code enforcement conducted an inspection following a snow event that ended in the early morning hours on January, uh, twentieth, twenty-twenty-five. The complaint alleged that multiple properties had not cleared snow all winter. I have included relevant code sections, city code sections in the appeal packet attachment one. So on January twenty-first, after the significant snowstorm, uh, code enforcement inspected the area after ten AM. This, uh, inspection complied with the required timeframe outlined in Municipal Code, which would be the twelve-eight zero-two-zero as documented in appeal packet attachment three. We then, uh, code enforcement posted the properties in violation on the twenty-first, which involves attaching a violation to the front door or affixing a violation to a yard sign, uh, when it's a vacant lot, when there's not a physical building there. I conducted a second inspection of the posted properties after ten AM on January twenty-second, which is the twenty-four hour timeframe that code dictates that we wait. Uh, the second inspection of, uh, seven fifty-five North Eleventh Street failed. And Gardaia Services LLC was contacted for an emergency abatement. Uh, as required by Municipal Code eight thirty-two, uh, two-sixty. The required timeframe for actions were met as outlined in Municipal Code. Uh, photographs were taken on January twenty-first and twenty-second documenting the conditions before and after the abatement. These are included in appeals packet number three. The bill from Gardaia Services LLC for the snow and ice removal at seven fifty-five North Eleventh Street was received January thirty-first, amounting to two hundred and ninety dollars, which is in appeals packet number five. Uh, see appeals packet attachment six containing a letter to accounts receivable requesting the city bill HMSC LLC uh, attention to Joanne Gozar Burgert for four hundred and thirty-five dollars, which includes the contractor's fee of two hundred and ninety dollars and administrative fee of a hundred and forty-five dollars. Okay, all right. The, uh, the applicant has not provided any evidence or reason for appealing the costs associated with the nuisance abatement. We have included an appeal packet attachment eleven, a letter from Joanne Burgert appealing the cost, and in attachment twelve, an email clarifying the intent of that letter. If you guys have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
It's a card. I just have some general questions about the process. Do you, uh, do, do you have other contractors? I mean, how many different contractors do you use, or are you basically at the whim of who's ever available?
It were, it's a little bit of both. Uh, so what we have is a list of approved contractors that have filled out the proper paperwork to become contractors for the city. Uh, we'll start out and how I work my process is I have a list of contractors and I'll start working down that list. And I'll call a contractor and say, are you guys available to do a snow abatement? If they say no, I move down to the next name on the list. Okay, so say the next guy down there said, yes, uh, we'll go ahead and do it. So then the next snow event that I have, I put those guys that we just used down at the bottom of my list. And then I start going down the list again until I find somebody who's available to do the job for me.
So is there a, a set price that these guys charge, or is there, uh, it's basically up to them?
It is totally, it's totally up to them. It'd be unprofessional for me to, uh, require them to charge a certain amount. And I don't try to find the resident the best price. You know, it's not, I'm just trying to find somebody who's going to go out there and
Get it done.
Get it done.
Okay. Of course, I see for his invoices he turned in for other, uh, addresses, he's kind of kind of consistent, you know, within a five-dollar bill, he's fairly consistent in what he's doing. Uh, seven, seven fifty-five is a corner lot. And I assume though, yeah, ten twenty-one Gibbons is a corner, and so it's fifty, five fifty-one North Tenth.
And I'd like to add also.
Seem fairly consistent, it's not, you know.
I'd like to add also that when I first got these bills, you know, I haven't done a lot of these abatements and the, the bill's very, as to what has to be done. Okay, uh, the, at the very beginning of the year, when all you're doing is removing snow, the prices are lower. And then when they get, like, these were, uh, snow and ice packed, to where you have to chip and put down ice melt and really work to get it out, then the prices do go up. And I'd like to add that the price that these guys charged for these abatements, these six abatements that we did, uh, coincides with the next vendor's charges that we had, you know, later in the year, where they were doing the same amount of work and the same thing. They were all pretty consistent, so I was, I was pretty surprised to see that.
Okay, good, yeah, good to know.
Thank you.
Um, I mean, I think the idea that, you know, there was five or six, uh, abatements that this company did.
Yeah.
Right?
And that, that, that's how we do it is, what I do is, like, this one here, when we went out or when I went out and did the inspection, I got a, a call about a lot of properties not maintaining their sidewalks. So I went from Tenth Street over to Twelfth Street, all the way from Harney up to, uh, Bradley Street. So I've canvassed that whole area. And out of those, I, uh, posted twenty-one properties. So twenty-one properties got a violation. Uh, the next day, when I went over to do the inspections, six properties failed the second inspection. So those six properties were, got the abatement. And the way, the way we do it is, I'll start at one property, start an abatement. If we go to the next property and that resident is out there and they're shoveling it off, we cross it off as completed. Uh, because they're, they're doing it. So then we'll move on to the next property. So it's kind of kind of luck of the draw, I guess, you could say.
All right, any other questions for, for Ray?
Okay. Um, I just, I just wanted to ask if you could elaborate a little bit more on, um, how you make the determination of emergency, because as I was reading um, the letter from the, um, applicant, I think one of the main issues was just, um, that, uh, what I picked up from the letter was that there was, um, the period, the short period of time Right. um, was, made it impossible for that landowner, the landowner to do anything about it. And, and if, but you have to act under the emergency provision. So if you could just clarify how you define emergency and why you felt that such quick action was necessary and it resulted in a bill pursuant to the code for the applicant.
Everything that I do is through the code. Uh, I get all guidance through city code. Uh, so in, uh, twelve-eight zero-two-zero, city code says that you have to have your snow removed twenty-four hours after a snow event, any accumulation. It doesn't stipulate that it is an inch or ten inches. Any accumulation, you have to have your snow removed. Uh, snow and ice is then emergency abatement in that code. So after the twenty-four hours, we're allowed to post the property. When we post the property, they have until ten AM the next day to have the snow removed. So everything that I've done in this process is through city code.
And you do it consist, you've applied it consistently.
Consistently through, all the way through, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And it's, and it's, it's in response to neighborhood or somebody else saying this is, that, um, i- 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 is it just the, the, the city sort of i- i- doing investigations, or is it in response to?
I, you know, I have, I've been doing this for two years and I have never been able to just go out and take a look and see what's, uh, not being done. Uh, early in the year, I'll get out and I'll put on door hangers in more of our, more problem areas, like around the university and, uh, different properties, just to give them a heads up with the code. You know, let them know what the code is. So that's one way that we reach out to people. Uh, we also send out, uh, email or, uh, Facebook post out there to let people know of the code and all that. So I think the education is out there for the residents.
Tom?
Just one more thing for the, so it's in the record. What is the basis for the administrative fee?
Uh, city code and, uh, the emergency is, no, it's in twelve-eight zero-two-zero. In city code, it says that, uh, we're going to charge for the administrative fee, it's either fifty percent of the administrative fee or a hundred dollars, whichever is more. So anything over two hundred dollars is fifty percent. Anything under two hundred dollars, they get charged an automatic one hundred dollars. So if the abatement costs fifty dollars from the contractor, we tack on a hundred dollars, it's a hundred and fifty dollar abatement fee.
All right, there you go. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions from commission for, for Ray? All right, seeing none, uh, Ms. Burgert, um, you're up.
Okay, um, first off, there's a misunderstanding Raymond has. Um, the property is owned jointly. Uh, HMSC LLC, um, it's a Wyoming LLC, was owned by my sister Grace Gozar. And as most of you know, Grace passed in October of last year. And I live in, my name is Joan M. Gozar Burgert, and I live in Idaho Falls. And I want to bring to your attention that, um, how I received your notification was a certified, uh, letter in my mailbox. And I had no time, uh, the appeal date or, or the, um, the date that I could, uh, I guess, I guess appeal, I guess, I was already passed, so that then they, your, uh, Raymond and Derek made that, a new appeal date for me. But I guess, um, my, the most important part of the code that I, I, I believe is in error, is that I live, I am a property owner in Laramie, but live outside of Laramie. Now, if Grace was still alive, I'll guarantee you Raymond wouldn't have been citing that property, okay? I have no way of seeing a sign in Laramie. I am living in Idaho Falls. There's just no way. I would be driving there. And so my most important point is your notification is visual, okay? People who live outside have no way of seeing that. It's only people within the city of Laramie that can see your signs and can be notified within the twenty-four hour period. Um, I believe that that is, i- in my eyes, a very discriminatory, um, uh, code, because if you want folks to own property in Laramie that live outside of Laramie, then you're going to have to have some other method of notification for those folks. So I believe your code is discriminatory as it stands right now. Um, I also, uh, was taken back because I live in Idaho Falls and, um, in my letter, I'm trying to contrast, um, exactly what we do here in Idaho Falls. First off, um, Idaho Falls has a population that's double what Laramie has. We live on the other side of the mountains. We essentially get storms equal or bigger than your storms. So I called the code enforcers. I have never seen anyone here get violated, a violation for not doing their sidewalks. And so I called them. And they told me that how they deal, how they apply their code, which I attached what the city of Idaho Falls' code is, which is virtually similar to Laramie, is that they first send a letter. Okay, that's their first way of notification, and they make sure the folks have received it. And then they go out, there are four code enfor, force, for code, for code enforce enforcers in the city of Idaho Falls. And they usually receive one to two calls regarding, uh, sidewalk, snow and ice removal per storm event. And so if they haven't seen anything happening with regards to the removal of the snow and ice, um, they actually go knock on the door of the property and they actually want to determine why that property owner is having issues. And essentially, you know, they say a lot of times the, the person's elderly, they can't do it, or, or there's some, um, uh, they don't have the means to remove the snow. And so what they do after that is work with them. They just don't sit there and, you know, send them this bill, okay? Um, they work with them. And so the code enforcers, code enforcers here in Idaho Falls told me that they have never cited a person with that process. They just haven't in five years that the code enforcers have been doing this. So essentially, I think that the method of notification is an important part of your code and how it is applied. And like I say, I, I, um, think that also the other part And like I say, I, I um, think that also the other part that uh, I, I know in that property is there's parts of it that have no sidewalk, okay? No sidewalk. And, and, and the, and, and so the, that's uh, also where, you know, where are you, you know, gonna be shoveling is another part. But then the other part too is that you're defining emergency as a snow and ice event. Now, you guys can attest, and I can attest, that you can have within an hour in the temperature variation, you can have ice forming, you could be just out there shoveling your walks, and all of a sudden they're iced. So, you know, this could, you could go around and around with regards to your, you know, definition of emergency. And I think there has to be some practicality applied to your code. And once again, my sister, she's not alive, she would have taken care of this. And I believe that, you know, there should be some, you know, this is a circumstance, it's different than most, and I think there should be some, you know, um, thought put into this bill sent to me at this point in time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Burget, appreciate your, your comments. Um, comments from commission? That Donald?
So, uh, first of all, uh, Joan commiserations on uh, Grace's passing. She was a very important member of this community. And so several things about this. Um, one is, um, a lot of people in Laramie walk around after snowstorms, and I am one of them. And several times I've taken a fall uh, on icy streets. One time I took a fall and I couldn't get up. I'm seventy-one years old, and I'm pretty healthy. Um, but the streets can be dangerous, and uh, if you take a fall and break a leg or break a wrist, uh, it can be expensive. So I guess after we've had a snow event, and particularly given the speed with which ice can form on sidewalks, i- it is dangerous, and people can be hurt. Uh, some years ago, we had a professor who, I think she stepped out on her front porch or something. She slipped, knocked herself out, and she died of hypothermia. So it is dangerous, and it needs to be dealt with uh, with straight away. Uh, in the past, we've had situations in town where uh, uh, people who own property in town, I'm thinking particularly of one, one Airbnb. Uh, they were out of, they're obviously out of town, uh, and there was snow on the sidewalk, and they ended up being fine. We did not make an exception there, because people need to make a provision if there's snowfall, uh, that they have a mechanism to make sure that the snow is cleared off the sidewalk. And no exception was made there, and uh, in my opinion, no exception should be made here.
Thanks, Donald, any, anybody else? You know, just to remind us, we're, we're, we're here to decide whether the amount of money is, is correct. And that's, we're not here crit- critiquing code and, and making a decision based on, on, on code and, you know, the type of arguments that, that Ms. Burget uh, made. Tom?
My only question is for staff. Uh, would be, how would you be able to determine in a reasonable amount of time if the owner of the property was from out of town? I mean, you could go to the GIS and get the name of a property owner, but if it's a corporation without any other information, what would be your ability to track somebody down? You'd have to become a detective, I would think.
Well, it's very difficult. As you can tell, uh, that in this uh, Burgert's case, I sent the pro, I sent it, the uh, bill originally to the uh, the LLC, which was her sister's. Uh, I wasn't aware that she had passed, and I wasn't aware that she's the owner of the LLC. The only thing I go by is what city code dictates, and it has in here that uh, I'm supposed to go and send a bill to whoever is on the uh, the billing information is pulled from the Albany County Property Taxes Information in accordance with eight thirty-two one ninety in municipal code. So that's the code that we use, that we bill every property owner at. Uh, like I said, if I go through there and you look at LLCs, there's LLCs, there's people that live in their house that are in LLC. So there's no way of knowing that that's a business. You know, it's just something that people have done for tax reasons, for, you know, death benefits and all that. So no, there's no way that I would be able to determine that. With the Ms. Burgert's case, I contacted Pete Gozar, and that's how I got her name. In, in that case, if Pete Gozar wasn't there, then we would send a second bill, and then a third bill. After the third bill, we'd send it to collections. And then the collections agency would go through and do the investigated and try to get the money out of whoever's the property owner at that time.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions from, from commission? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll move, uh, we uphold the, commission uphold the uh, the uh, costs, so we would reject the appeal of A two five dash oh one, we would reject that appeal.
Just read the recommended motion.
Move to uphold the cost of a nuisance abatement for the property located at seven five five North Eleventh Street, noting the city followed all appeals process requirements of LMC eight thirty-two dash two three zero, and that the correct amount of four hundred and thirty-five dollars was charged for the work completed related to the abatement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Donald. Uh, final discussion?
I, I'd like to discuss, I'd like to say that, you know, you, by doing that, are.
Now, now, we're, 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 we're into, into the motion, Ms. Burget, we've.
Okay.
Heard, we've heard the, the discussion, so roll, roll call vote, please.
Do you want to do public comment?
Oh, okay, so, yeah, uh, pu- pu- public comment on the motion? I guess Ms. Burget, if Burget, Ms. Burget wants to comment on it, you can state your final comments.
I'll state my final comments. Um, essentially, by approving what you're doing right there, you have absolutely, one, not addressed your issue, which is communication of your code. Two, folks like me will not try to invest in Laramie, okay? Because essentially, why, okay? Why? If they're gonna get bills every time there's a snowstorm, okay? So I, I believe that it's, there, there, there's an issue here. And yes, you can just, you know, follow the code, that's a, that's a very safe way to do it, but you're not really addressing the issue, okay? The issue. And, and you're also saying to me that your streets, at the very same time that my sidewalks are icy, your streets are icy as well. So, you know, I, I don't know, it, there's just gonna be ice, you're, you know, as far as, you know, Mother Nature puts it out there, I just don't know how you're going to, to somehow magically remove it, okay? So, yeah, that's my comments, and yes, um, that does determine, um, the other part too is that everyone well knows, going by that, that lot, that if we're all talking safety, that safety is a factor of at least ten times better for the money that's put into that lot. So, you know, just, once again, it's just not moving um, uh, investment in your community. Thank you.
Okay, um, so Ray, I, I, I trust that the, the appeals process was was in accordance with, with code?
Yes, yes, sir.
So there's just appeals process, and there's, and whether the amount of.
Yeah, so in the appeals process.
Correct, which, which it is.
Yeah, so based on the appeal, procedural requirements of Laramie Municipal Code, eight thirty-two two thirty, the Board of Appeals can only consider whether the cost of the abatement is correct. The board cannot review the specifics of the basement, uh, abatement itself, uh, waive any fees or alter any decision regarding what was removed or how it was remo- removed. So the only thing we're looking at here is, did Gardaia Services in your packet charge two hundred and ninety dollars? And did I divide that right and add it together and have the correct amount?
It's quite cut and dried.
Yep, thank you very much.
Okay.
I, I'd just like to add that I, I agree that it's cut and dry, and we have a limited role to play here. But I do appreciate that there was a meaningful opportunity to appeal and hear um, the perspective um, of the applicant. Um, and I'm glad we took the time uh, to consider that. Uh, but there are differences between Laramie's code, um, and, and we have to apply Laramie's code.
Yeah, absolutely.
And the determination has been made that there's an emergency situation here, so that the sidewalks are clear, so there is a safe place uh, to walk, so that people aren't left to walk on um, the streets. And, and so our, our role is limited here. The larger issues that, that may be very valid are, are for the council to consider in terms of the appropriateness of the code and whether it should be changed. But I don't see any question in terms of applying the code as it exists.
I, I agree. I think the things that, that, that talked about, Ms. Burget, the city wouldn't be able to enforce their code, and it would just be, every situation would be unique, and out, out of town landowners would be given a, a free pass, and it's their responsibility to, to arrange for, for um, abatement of, of snow when it, when it occurs. That's, that's just kinda, I think, the rules that the city has established. Tom?
Which is why I asked Mrs. Sandow all about the uh, the process and how they came with these figures, and that's why I brought that up. So it's in the record that they're justified and they're standard.
Right, no, it's a good point, Tom. Uh, final comments from commission? Uh, Donald?
Uh, it seems like we're gonna get several cases, at least one or two cases like this every year, because I think there's a fair number of absent uh, property owners outside of town. Um, there's no practical way, in terms of the records, to have on record phone numbers or email addresses, so that somebody could be told within twenty-four hours they're facing the possibility of a fine. That's not, you don't have access to that information, is that correct?
Yeah. Just so you guys are aware, uh, I posted over a hundred and sixty-five properties this winter, and granted, it hadn't been a very strong winter. Uh, out of the hundred and sixty-five properties that I posted, uh, forty-five of them, we actually did abatements on, and we've had one appeal so far. So, you know, just to put it kinda in perspective, and another thing, she said that uh, there's four code enforcement officers in Idaho Falls, uh, I'm just the only guy here. So, you know, it's uh, the amount of stuff that I have to do, uh, really doesn't, wouldn't be beneficial for me to sit there and try to track down every single property owner to let them know that they have snow and ice in the wintertime.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions from c- commission? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Pacino?
Aye.
Evans? Madamore?
Aye.
Isaac White? O'Toole?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
And Moody?
Aye.
That's seven yeses and zero nos.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn as Board of Appeals?
So moved.
Second. From John, uh, was uh, in agreement to adjourn, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye? Okay, we're done.